I don't want to do any interviews, you don't have to. Be a lot of work for me to do for nothing, that's up to you. So. Did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are we looking for a motion yet, or still discussion?
Not yet, I'd just like to give everybody the opportunity to weigh in before we do any motions. If anybody else has anything to say.
So if Desiree were to call for the list tomorrow, seven days from then, right, you would know?
Oh, they have to prepare the list, certify it, mail it to me. I asked them if I can come up and pick it up. They're not letting certain people in the offices up there, so they'll mail it to me. So figure I'll get it.
Yeah.
We'll say Wednesday, Thursday, it's Highland Mills Post Office, so who knows? So if I get it, say I get it Thursday, well, worst case scenario, get it Thursday, letters, then go out in the mail Friday. So this can be dated the 21st, then they have to get it to me back by the 28th, that's seven days. Hold interviews the first week in June.
Keeping in mind, that's Memorial Day week.
Yeah.
Thank you, Larry's last day is the 18th.
Correct, correct. So that's just a possible timeline depending on when everything comes up.
The other thing I want to mention is, is the way in which we budgeted for this next fiscal year. This will change, if we do this, and if we hire somebody off the list, this will change the way in which we budgeted. And I think everybody understands why. Anyone have any further comments? Chris, did you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we put out for our list.
Okay, we have a motion to authorize the village clerk to call for the civil service list from the county's Department of Human Resources. Do we have a second? Trustee Derek with the second, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
I.
Two, three, four, I'm gonna, I'm sorry, I'm gonna vote. Okay, we good there, you got it? Okay. Old business, further discussion of realignment of Turner Road, Steve, you can turn your camera on now if you'd like. So this application was first discussed by the board at our March 11th, 2021 meeting. Late last month, Steve Esposito, the engineer for the applicant submitted a letter with an updated preliminary site plan for this project. As a result of their recent submission to the planning board, the planning board attorney stated that they must obtain confirmation from the village board that proceeding with the realignment of Turner Road is accepted. Plan would include the dedication of a portion of land to the village currently owned by the applicant. It was noted further that the plans have been developed in conjunction with New York State DOT, the village's traffic consultant, and emergency services. Modification to the Turner Road and its rights and its right of way are under the jurisdiction of the village board. So with that said, I'd like to invite Steve, I assume you're here on the behalf of the applicant, to add any comments you'd like before we have a discussion with the board.
No, thank you, Tim. Just, you know, we attached for the board's review, the current site plan that shows the realignment of Turner Drive, Turner Road, and then the small portion of land that is currently owned by the applicant. Their old deeds, they go to the center line of roads or beyond, in the case of Route 32. And part of the improvements along Route 32 would be the realignment of Turner Road, and then also some off-site improvements within Route 32, and of course, dedication of land to the New York State Department of Transportation as well. The piece of land that we're talking about is like 3,800 square feet. That's the, that's the highlighted portion of the existing parcels. And we were advised by the planning board that this is under your jurisdiction and that we need to get your concurrence that we can move forward with this plan as proposed. As Tim said, the plan has been worked, developed over the past year in coordination with the DOT, your traffic consultant, the ESOs, and also coordinated with our neighbor, which is another application for the planning board for another hotel. So, we're here tonight to get a confirmation from the village board that if this finally gets approved by the DOT and by the planning board, and gets constructed in accordance with the approved plans, and to the satisfactory of the DOT and the village engineer, that the village board would accept the dedication of the 3,800 square feet.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Now, I asked Kelly earlier today to invite our traffic consultant, just in case they had anything to add, and if the board had any questions for them, I'm not sure if they're here or not, though. Is the traffic, oh, Rich, beautiful. Rich, first of all, did you have anything to add to anything that Steve said based on any of the meetings that you attended, or anything from DOT?
No, no, generally, we're, we're in agreement with what Steve said. You know, we believe that the improvements that are proposed make sense for the project. And we don't really, you know, there's some details that probably still need to be worked out on the DOT end of things, and we have some comments back to the planning board about maybe the width of the roadway between the state highway and their access. But otherwise, generally, we're in agreement with what's being proposed here.
Okay, thanks, Rich. I saw Mr. William Frank pop his camera on, I assume you're a consultant for this project, or?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Board. I'm the attorney for the applicant, and I just wanted to note that, first of all, thank you for putting this matter on the agenda. And second of all, along with Steve, our, our client, Mr. Ahmad, is here only for answering any questions that any board members or village consultants may have. That's all I wanted to say. I think the information that Steve gave is, is accurate, and we're, we're just trying to move the project forward at the, under the direction of the planning board and, and the village consultants, and that's why we're here before you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frank. Okay, so I think now would be a good time to go out to the board for a discussion and the opportunity to ask any questions of the consultants. We'll start with Chris, go ahead.
I got a quick question, because it's in black and white in the document I got. So was it the thing that looks kind of like a knife with a handle, is that the area we're talking about?
Yeah, kind of like a, yeah, I guess a knife or a hatchet, a cleaver.
Cleaver, yes. Okay, so that's the land you're proposing to do what with?
Well, that's the land that's owned right now, that's part of the existing tax parcel. So when we realign Turner Drive, you know, we would typically, you know, dedicate that land to the jurisdiction of whatever roadway. So we would just basically offer it to the village of Woodbury, once the improvements are completed. So you would own the road, road right of way.
Okay, and do you need village property somewhere on this map that I can't figure out?
No.
So it's not a land swap?
No, there's, there's going to be a land, oh, there we go. So, yeah, so the wider portion, and the little handle part, the green is that's what would be offered for dedication to the village upon completion of the improvements. The, there's going to be a slate, there's also going to be a dedication of land north of Turner Drive. The D goes almost all the way across Route 32, so that'll be dedicated to the, to the state upon completion. And that's all within the state right of way. And the red line, and the red line that you see is really what would be the proposed new road right of way for both Turner Drive and for Route 32. So basically, clean that area up. If you recall, that's, the existing pavement is very wide there, so we would, you know, clean all that up as well.
So the, the ask of us is to, if we want to take this land, what's the other ask of the village?
That's it.
Now, I understand it is, they want to donate the land to the village as part of this project, and?
It's pretty standard procedure, you know, with old deeds that go into the travelway. Typically, when an applicant comes before the planning board for a subdivision or a site plan, that, that, the jurist, whoever has jurisdiction over that road requests this gratuitous offer of dedication.
Yeah, if, if I just may add to that for a moment, Mr. Mayor, it would be a standard offer of dedication procedure, as Steve would just, had just said. And we would tender the deed and the transfer documents to the village, and the village would be under no obligation to accept the final deed until the work was done, the surrounding work was done to the satisfaction of the village and the village consultants and the planning board. Then, you know, the offer of dedication would be irrevocable, but the actual dedication would take place after the work is done.
Right, thank you for adding that additional input on that, because that's typically the way it's done, and I want to make sure the board is fully aware of all of that.
Yeah, we just, we, I, I just want to make it clear that, you know, whatever procedures are set forth by the planning board, if we go forward with the approval, of course, the applicant is going to follow them. Thank you.
Where the picture?
Oh, I'm sorry, did you want to bring the picture back?
I have it here.
I have a few questions. Okay. One, what were the comments from the ESOs and from the Highway Department about these plans and us taking over the right of way?
Actually, why don't we address that to the traffic consultant, our traffic consultant, who can speak on our behalf to that?
Yeah, I'm actually not aware of any comments specific to the, the, you know, the dedication of the property. You know, we do have some comments about, ourselves have some comments about the width of that roadway, and ultimately, maybe that roadway needs to be a little bit wider. Right now, they're proposing a 24-foot wide roadway. But based on some information we've been provided thus far, it looks like in order to accommodate some emergency vehicles appropriately, as well as maybe delivery vehicles to the site, that the roadway maybe need to be a little bit wider. So we are looking at that, and that'll have to be hashed out as we move forward with the approvals of the planning board level. But that would just slightly increase the dedication, likely. But other than that, I'm not really aware of any other comments offhand.
Yeah, I, I know I was at one of those meetings. I'm just not sure which one it was, to be honest with you, there were so many back then, and I don't remember anything either, but I can't swear. I think the realignment actually helped a little bit with some of the turns for emergency vehicles, especially the fire trucks. But, you know, we're, we're, we're actually talking about two different things. We're talking about the dedication of land, which is what we're, we have to decide on here, versus ESO comments as to the project overall, and turning radiuses and things of that nature, which really would be dealt with by the planning board. But our issue is the dedication of the land, or the offer of dedication of the land. Which, again, we don't have to accept until we're satisfied with all the improvements. Is that incorrect in any way?
This is, this is standard procedure, there's no other reason why they would want to give this to us? Other than, here's land, I, I, that's what, I'm, I'm just confused as to why, why we're needed at all.
In other words, why do they want to give this land to us? What would happen if they didn't give this land to us?
Yes.
Right? I can tell you, to answer your question, yeah, for projects like this, it is standard procedure, but it's to their motivation, I'd have to let the applicant answer that question.
Well, our motivation is, is that we don't really want to own Turner Road, you know, it's, it's.
Oh, I see, so as part of this realignment, that's going to be part of Turner Road?
Right, Turner Road is.
I don't know who's talking, I'm sorry.
It's Steve.
Thanks, because the pictures are gone, so.
Yes, so the green, you know, when, when it's all said and done, the improvements are going to be within the green area. So it just makes, it's procedure that we offer that to the jurisdiction, who has jurisdiction over that travelway.
That makes sense, and our highway administrator would like to weigh in on this as well. So Rob, why don't you go ahead?
I just, the only thing, question I have is I didn't receive any plans on this, I didn't, I have no notification of this. I just, I'm kind of taken back why the Highway Department of all departments wasn't given a set of plans for road reconstruction.
Yeah.
Can't speak to that. Steve, what's?
You know, we've been communicating with, you know, your consultants, with the planning board. You know, we can get you a set of plans tomorrow. You know.
So obviously, an oversight, but, yeah. All right, so unless, go ahead, Jesus, you have something?
Well, my, my question, I guess you sort of answered, because who, I was going to ask who was responsible for this piece of land until we decide to take it over or not? And when does that transfer, if we decide to not take it, what happens then?
Well, then.
Who's going to maintain it?
They have to maintain it, but here's what I'm going to suggest. Since Rob has not seen any plans on this yet, I'd like to give Rob the opportunity to review this at, at his convenience. I'd like us to consider everything that was presented here tonight, unless, of course, there's other questions, and/or the consultants on either side, whether it be our traffic consultant or the project consultants have anything more that they'd like to add. And maybe we'll just table this until the next meeting for a decision, because there seems to be some concern that, you know, on Rob's part, that he hadn't seen this yet. I can see that, and maybe perhaps you guys want to think about this a little bit, just throwing that out there.
Is that going to be a?
Makes sense.
Is that entry going to be used for the main entrance to the hotel, or is it the other side of Turner?
No, the other side, our main entrance will be north of Turner. It'll be a new entrance drive, pretty much in location of one that's existing now, just slightly north of it. But that will be our main entrance in, and then we will exit out onto Turner.
From there? Because I see two, two arrows coming the opposite way, going in that way. No? Am I seeing it wrong? I see two arrows like heading in, into us that main entrance, no?
Well, if you're talking about the southbound lane of Route 32, part, part of the, part of this site overall improvement is that we're going to include a, we're going to realign or improve Route 32 to have, provide a left-hand turn lane that doesn't exist now onto Turner. And the through traffic, what, southbound, can pass through any vehicle that's, that's making the left-hand turn. So it's an improvement to the state highway.
But not the main entrance into your.
Well, our main entrance is nor, is, is north of Turner Drive.
Okay. I don't get it.
Perhaps you could, Steve, perhaps you can demonstrate with your cursor where the.
Do you see my cursor now? Can you give me the screen?
Well, while we're doing that, I'm not opposed to Tim's idea of tabling this a little bit, for a couple of reasons. One, I agree with the fact that Rob should have the opportunity to review this. But second, you know, what I heard earlier is from the traffic consultant, is that this green shaded area may change sizes depending on what happens going forward. So I don't know how we're supposed to vote on something that may or may not be what's before us tonight. I just don't know how we do that.
Well, I, I think the, we were, we were directed to come to the village board. And I think what Rich said is that, you know, there's, this is going to be, this is currently being, it's under review of the DOT, it's under review of the planning board. You know, there's going to be, as any project, there's going to be, you know, adjustments. And if, if your traffic consultant thinks that Turner Road should be wider, then we're going to accommodate that. But the concept is, is we're going to physically make the improvements to the road, at Route 32, at no cost to the state and at no cost to the village. And when we're done with those improvements, and your village engineer signs off on it, and the DOT signs off on it, we're proposing that we're going to dedicate the land that is currently privately owned to the village, so you own the road right of way. That's what we're proposing. Whether the road, the right of way is eight feet wider than it is today, it's kind of irrelevant. We're looking to, we need an acknowledgement from the village board that you would be, except, you would, you would consider this as a proposal.
All right, well, I'm still with the, let Rob review it first.
It's not unreasonable, Steve, you should be able to annotate if you want to.
Yeah, please, can you show us?
Can you see my cursor now?
No. No.
Yeah.
All right.
It's on a delay, it's a little delayed, you gotta.
Yeah, so right now, just, we'll review this, the darker line is the existing deed line, in the existing parcels. So all of this land between the blue or black, I can't tell what color that is, to the red, is owned by the current owners. So this big piece of land will be granted, be granted to the state of New York. This little piece here is in the state right of way. We can either make the, we're proposing that the geometry of the road right of way follow the road, which is standard procedure. So this piece would actually go back from the state to the applicant or to the property owner. And then the green area between the dark line and the red line would be the piece that we're offering to the village, which is a little bit less than 4,000 square feet total. So there's a slight widening here, and then this is where the, so this is where the improvement is. The, these two little arrows here on Route 32, this is the turn lane. And then this is, will be the through lane, so traffic, through traffic won't get impacted by anybody making a turn into a turn.
Southbound.
Oh, and one other thing, and right now, it's, it's a Y intersection, which would never be acceptable. Where the intersections have a common tangent to the right, to the center line of Route 32. And we've aligned it with the existing hotel across the street driveway, so now you have a T intersection here. So anybody accessing either from the hotel or from Turner, you can see each other, you're, 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 you know, it's, it's appropriate geometry.
Further from the board?
No, I'm good.
Chris, Tyra, Jesus, anything?
Yeah, I'm, going back to what Steve was just saying, so if you were to leave it the way it is right now, what does the DOT say about that? Like, without us taking the debt, accepting the dedication? What, what are their thoughts on the way the intersection is as it is?
Well, let me jump in, Steve, real quick, accepting the dedication or not really doesn't have anything to do with the DOT design. This is an offer.
How would it not have anything to do with the DOT?
Because the DOT design is, is, is between the DOT, the applicant, our traffic consultant, and so on. What'll happen here is that if we don't accept the dedication, they'll be responsible for the road. If we do, we'll be responsible for the road, but that won't change the design or what happens there. Am I incorrect, Steve?
Well, it's, I mean.
If I am, I apologize.
By, by use, and, you know, Will, if you want, weigh in, but by use, I mean, the village has the authority to my, you know, you own, you own the road. I mean, the road right now, right, you know, the deeds come to Turner, come into Turner Drive now. It, it's in fee, so this is existing Turner Drive right here. So this piece of the, of the lot, and this piece of the lot is still within Turner Drive, or Turner Road. So it, what we're suggesting is that, you know, this geometry cleans up the whole intersection, provides the, the turn lane and the through lane for the southbound. Aligns them, you know, perpendicular to the hotel, existing hotel drive. And, you know, we're just saying, you know, this is the time to clean this up and dedicate the land so the, so the municipality or the state owns and fee the lands that they have jurisdiction over.
That's correct.
So the DOT is okay leaving it if we don't want it, that's my question? Leaving the intersection the way it is, as wide as it is, with the turnoff? I'm trying to understand the ramifications of not accepting this.
I would suggest you.
Yeah, we need to seek counsel on that from.
Yeah, that's a counsel question.
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to.
No, I don't, I don't want you to, I'd rather counsel on that. Certainly, unfortunately, she got hung up at a previous meeting that she was hoping would be free, which is yet another reason why we should adjourn this until the next meeting, so that we can be sure to have counsel answer our questions on this. I, I think we're starting to get into the area of attorney questions that, again, Mr. Frank should not be answering on. You know, it should be our attorney's. Why don't we stick a pin in this until our next meeting on the 27th? And that way, we can have counsel on this, we can think about it, Rob can review the plans, and so on. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah.
All right, so we'll just table that until the next board meeting on the 27th. All right, very good. I thank you, thank you, Steve, and Mr. Frank, and Rich, especially for joining us on short notice, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
So you'll be on the next agenda on the 27th, we'll make sure of that. Yeah. All right, so that actually, unless I missed something, that was the old business that concludes all of our regular business this evening, so we can go out to the public for public comment on anything, in the open eye. Anybody in the public have anything they'd like to say? Give everyone a second to unmute themselves if they have any thoughts or comments. Okay, hearing none, we'll move to board member and department head comments. So I want to start by recognizing National Police Week, which this year is from May 9th through May 15th. National Police Week is a time to honor our law enforcement officers who have made the ultimate sacrifice and service to the nation, and those that keep us safe each and every day all year long. So thank you to police officers everywhere, especially our Woodbury Police Department here at home. We should also recognize National Nurses Week, which ended yesterday. The reason it ended yesterday and not the end of the week, because May 12th is Florence Nightingale's birthday, and the last day of National Nurses Week each year is on her birthday. So if you know a nurse, or especially if you need, please take a minute to say thank you for their service. Next is, next week is National EMS Week. So this is a week that's set aside every year to recognize emergency medical technicians and paramedics who provide emergency medical services in communities across the country. It's a time to recognize and honor EMS professionals for their tireless dedication to their communities, not just during this pandemic that we're going through, but each and every day. Since the pandemic started, many EMTs and paramedics became sick, and sadly, some have lost their lives simply by doing their jobs or just volunteering in their communities. Next week, take a moment to thank an EMS provider when you see one. Moving on, based on information received from the New York Conference of Mayors just in the past couple of days, the federal American Rescue Plan will deliver $350 billion, all to the village of Woodbury. Now, I'm just kidding. $350 billion for eligible state, local, and territorial tribal governments to respond to the COVID-19 emergency. The US Department of Treasury is providing this much-needed funding to replace lost revenues for eligible state, local, territorial, and tribal governments to strengthen support for vital public services. The good news is that the village of Woodbury is slated to receive $1,473,403, to be exact. We're still waiting on the actual application for that funding to come through, but this is what the New York Conference of Mayors is telling us, and this is the data that's been available to us. So hopefully, this will actually happen, and we should get a nice pile of money. One of the intended uses for this funding is to invest in water, sewer, infrastructure, and making necessary improvements to improve access to clean drinking water and support vital wastewater and stormwater infrastructure. This fits very nicely with our specific needs, and once we actually receive funding, we'll determine the best use of these funds. There'll be more to come on this as the funding develops, so stay tuned for that. With that, I just want to thank everybody for joining us tonight, we had a nice crowd, and we appreciate you joining us. Why don't we go out to trustee Gomez? Or am I doing, no, I'm sorry, trustee Graziano is just first.
All right, and Jesus could have went first, I'm not married to being first. No, I have very, very brief comments, I'm sure 17 people fell over chairs now hearing that, but I just want to thank everybody for coming tonight, and a couple of things I wanted to just top my head. Next week is coming up, is the school board vote, so make sure people go out and, and vote for your, whatever, whoever you support, vote. If you support the budget or not, but most important, vote. That's one of the greatest rights that we have as Americans, is to go out and vote and choose our candidates for these types of things, and, and be able to approve or disapprove spending through our, through the save, our single vote. So every vote counts, so I really encourage everybody to get out there and vote for whoever, whom everybody needs to vote for. And secondly, I do. Um, and secondly, I just, you know, as we heard today, and, you know, COVID's starting to relax a little bit. The numbers are coming down. The CDC has come up with some new recommendations. Unfortunately, uh, New York State is not yet grasped onto those recommendations, but I just ask everybody, we're almost there. I know everybody's got a lot of fatigue and COVID fatigue is a real thing. Um, I suffer from it myself and I can't wait till I can go and hang out. And actually, you know, I said this, um, today, I can't wait till we get back in Village Hall and do these meetings in person. Um, that's one of my big things I'm looking forward to. So everybody just stay calm and keep doing what you're doing. Um, the vaccine's plentiful out there. Go get the vaccine and the sooner we do all that, the sooner we'll be out of this and sooner we can put this in our rearview mirror. So again, thank you, everybody, and have a great night.
Thank you, Chris. Trustee Gomez.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, CJ. Thank you all for coming up. Thank you all to our department heads and all the village employees for all the great work that you do for our Woodbury community. I also want to take the time out to thank our Woodbury Police Department and all law enforcement agencies throughout our nation. Please take that time out of your day, if you can, and say hi or give a quick smile or a thank you to a cop if you pass by one. I can tell you for a fact that that little gesture on your part to them means more than you know. With the way the society is going nowadays, with the lack of respect that is shown to each other, and yes, sometimes the fear we have for each other, take, take the time to say hello or thank you or say we support you. This makes doing the job much easier to take. Remember, to get respect, you must earn it, show it and give it. And that goes both ways. Arguing on the street with a law enforcement officer is not the time or place. And use of violence is never the answer. The time to fight back is in the courtroom with a lawyer and the proof of your innocence. We all know our judicial system is not the perfect, but we as a nation are trying to improve it and make it fair for everyone involved in it. And we try, all try and show each other peace, kindness and above all, respect. Have a great night. God bless and stay safe.
Amen. This is very nice. Thank you. Uh, trustee Burek.
Uh, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for attending this evening. Um, as I reflect back on these last 15 months since the pandemic began, I can't help but think about all those people who were affected by mental illness, who were already isolated on the inside. But now we're forced to be physically isolated from the outside world due to social distancing and quarantines. Every year, millions of Americans face the reality of living with a mental illness that is true, even more these, more so these days. May is Mental Health Awareness Month, uh, which is meant to shed light on different mental illnesses that exist to raise awareness about the importance of mental health. And even more importantly, it is to help get people comfortable even talking about mental health in an effort to help end the stigma surrounding it. This is the time of year where many people focus on providing support, education and advocacy for policies that support these people as well as their families. Now more than ever, we need to find ways to stay connected with those vulnerable populations within our communities. Whether they are family members or neighbors, to offer our support and to reiterate to these people that they are not on this journey alone. Education in this area is key. Uh, for the more that you know, the more you can empathize with someone who might be suffering and the more you can help forge a world where mental health issues are given the attention and treatment they so desperately need and deserve. Raise awareness today to end the stigma of tomorrow. Um, on a lighter note, um, Tuesday, May 18th is my daughter Lily's fifth birthday. And she watches these meetings. So she'll watch a recording of it. So I just wanted to tell her how proud I am for how far she's come. Um, for those who don't know, she was born three months premature, um, at under two pounds. And at the time for birth, her odds of survival were not at all favorable. Uh, so my husband and I were never sure that we would ever see her fifth birthday. Um, so for anyone who knows Lily today and has watched her grow and develop, you know that she is one of the most resilient and determined people that I know. Her tenacity is unmatched, and I really do pity the person in this world who tells her that she can't do something. She's grown into an amazing and strong-willed little girl. And I know I speak for my husband, Chris, when I say that we are so grateful for the person she's becoming and also for being blessed with the opportunity to be her parents. Lily has taught us so much more than we will ever be able to teach her. So to Lily, who will watch this meeting tomorrow morning, happy fifth birthday. I love you very much and we're very proud of you. Thank you, everyone. Stay safe.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday. Birthday from Uncle Andrew Lily. She's gonna love that. Thank you.
Yeah, that was great. Thanks, Tyra. Was, did you say raise awareness today for tomorrow's problems? Is that what you said?
Raise awareness today to end the stigma of tomorrow.
That was great. I tried to write it down as you were saying it. That's really.
I'll just send it to you.
That'd be great. That's really terrific. I'm, I'm actually going to use, I'm going to give that to our mental health team down in Rockland. That's, that's.
Oh, you have one? That's great.
Well, we, we, we run the, uh, mental health crisis thing for all of Rockland County. Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah. Uh, for six years now. Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, next up is, uh, trustee Jacomaza.
Uncle, Uncle Jacomaza.
Uh, all right. Thank you, everybody, for joining us this evening. Thank you, May Regan, for having me. Um, I walked into Jay's Deli this morning. Uh, this is not a new phenomenon for me. I often walk in. That is how I've been able to build a body like this. I was surprised to see the following sign posted on the glass display, for immediate hire. And it is list, and it listed various job openings and it was extensive. This is the latest bump in the road for our local eateries, our local businesses. You have seen the various social media posts from our local restaurants looking for employees, A Better Place, Woodbury Diner, Cosmos, and on and on. These businesses have survived what they thought was the difficult part of the pandemic, the complete closures, the limited capacity, creating outdoor dining, early closing hours, new and stricter guidelines, employees with COVID. Now with things beginning to slowly move forward and more and more people hoping to return to some sense of normalcy, our local restaurants are now facing the latest issue, finding people to work. Uh, notice how I didn't say competent, just finding people. I've been contacted by a few of these establishments looking for assistance and ideas. And quite honestly, I'm baffled on what to do. The struggle is real and some have begun reducing hours and are seriously closing, considering closing altogether. One suggestion was a call to action. Our village board, working with our local restaurants in an attempt to help them staff and meet the upcoming demand. A demand that hopefully allows these owners to return to the goal they set when they first opened their doors, feeding the residents of Woodbury and feeding their own families by generating income. Over the next week or so, I hope to sit down collectively with these new owners and village board members, put our heads together and see what we can do to assist our businesses in their time of need. I will be posting lists of the various restaurants and openings needed on our social media sites. Hopefully we can help them or help those who time and time again have done more than provide us with a decent meal. They have invested in our community, in our Woodbury. Now it is our time for us to come to their aid and help them pull through the latest phase of the pandemic. Thank you once again for joining us and have a good night.
Thank you, Andrew. Uh, so let's go to Madam Clerk. Nothing. Okay. Two department heads then. Uh, why don't we start with Mr. Wyatt? You're still there. Yep, I see you.
I'm sorry. I was distracted by the banner.
I know.
No, I, I don't have anything at this time.
All right, thanks.
The award-winning clerk. I mean, we should call it that now.
Point. For the rest of the year, she should be the award-winning clerk.
Thank you. I did forget that the week after February 29th, the last few days of February is Highway Appreciation Day. So February 30th and 31st.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just two days. That's it?
Just those two days.
We'll have to make a note on our calendars. If you can find those days, of course, on the calendar. Uh, okay, Mickey, anything?
No, Tim. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, let's see. Chief Frizzillo.
Uh, no, nothing, Tim. Just, uh, we're still in cruise control mode over in the fire department. That's it.
Thanks, Pat. Chief Burke, anything?
Nope, all good here. Thanks.
Very good. Uh, Mr. Hand, anything from the building department? I see you there.
Nothing here.
Okay, very good. I think that's everybody. Uh, so with that said, I'm looking for a motion in a second to enter into an executive session pursuant to public office's law to discuss one honor related to the possible promotion of an individual, after which time no action will be taken during that executive session and the meeting will be adjourned immediately on its conclusion. I like that motion. Trustee Gomez with the motion. Trustee Jacomaza with the second. Any discussion? All in favor? All right. Thank you, everybody, and good night.
We're waving good night.
We're waving good night.
Yes.
Just the gesture.
Yeah.